For our social media. As well as, do we have anyone that is attending by conference call? The facility is open to maximum of 25 people in the facility and we do have people in our facility today. So I thank you all for attending. That teleconference phone number is 877-309-2073. That's 877-309-2073. The access code is 590-380-589. That's 590-380-589. As most of you know, we are not, we do not have anything open for public comments. So we will not be taking any answers during, or any questions during the council meeting for, with our citizens. At this time, as stated earlier, we're going to call this meeting to order, which is our, our June 15th, 2021 meeting. Our invocation will be by Councilwoman Floyd.
Let us pray.
Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we bow before you this day as your humble servant, giving you all the glory for a beautiful summer day that you've given us today, Lord. And now, Lord, that we come before you, we ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and your humility, that only you can put in our hearts as we do the business of the citizens of Williamsburg County. We ask all of these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Floyd. We do not have any minutes on approval at this point because we just had a meeting last week and we're still compiling that information. First up on our list is, I am happy to announce, I hope, our annual financial audit for the year ending June 30th, 2020. We have Mr. Larry Finney, as well as Ms. Robin Poston, as well as our finance team, Ms. Elizabeth Nelson and Brenda McDonald in the house to talk about this. Mr. Finney?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I really appreciate you guys suffering through me on Zoom a couple, for a couple meetings, and I'm really glad to be able to be here in person to get to see and talk with you tonight. So, as you know, you've got in front of you the audited financial statements, as well as a copy of this presentation. I'm going to take a few minutes to kind of highlight a few things throughout this presentation. And obviously, Robin and I are both here to answer any questions that you have as well. So, and I always like to start out and just remind you as a council about what, what an audit is and what it is not. And so, you know, when we, when we talk about responsibilities, that, and you look at the financial statements that are sitting in front of you, most of what's in there is actually the responsibility of the county. And in this case, the county was both Green, Finney, as well as Liz and Brenda and, and the rest of the team. And so, from, from a county's perspective, you've got two things when you look at those financial statements. One is all the balances and amounts that, that are in the financial statements themselves. And obviously, that's important. But from our perspective, what's just as important is what's behind all that, and that's the internal controls and the processes and procedures that are put in place. And so, we just like to remind you about a couple things when we're talking about all that. One is that there is no perfect system. It would take so many people and so much money to have a perfect system, that there's always limitations in terms of your internal controls and, and processes and procedures. And so, that's why it's important for all of us together as a team to do what we call regular risk assessment. And that's us, and we've done it with Dr. Wright, Brendan, Liz, and us have sat down and talked about, you know, how are things operating? Where is there more risk? Where do we need to do things differently? Consider changing things up? And so, we, I just want to encourage you as council members, because of the fiduciary responsibility that you have, is don't be afraid to ask questions of any of us as, as you think about things yourselves. So, what then, we then have Robin and her team as the auditors who come in, and what we ask them to do as far as the audit's concerned, the end result of everything they do, there's a lot of work that goes into it, but when it's all said and done, it's the opinions that they issue. And that opinion that's in front of the financial statements is the end result of all of that work. And there's a couple of things I like to remind you of when, when we talk about that opinion and the work that they do. One is, they're providing reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, because they're not looking at every single transaction. They're looking at the material transactions, they're selecting a lot of samples, but they're not looking at everything. And then, they're also focused on, on what we call materiality. And so, that opinion says that everything's fairly stated in all material respects. And so, that's an important concept to keep in mind, focusing on the big picture and, and the bigger dollars. It's also important to remember that that opinion does not address the financial condition of the county, it does not address the odd, the fraud, as far as, that's not the purpose of what the audit is. But, that opinion that you have, that county has received for the year ended June 30th, 2020, is an unmodified opinion. And I know that doesn't necessarily mean anything to you, but that's really the best opinion that you can receive, as a county, as any entity, is to receive that, that unmodified opinion. And so, there's two places that I wanted to be sure and stop and, and say, thank you, Liz, and thank you, Brenda, and this is one of them, because this is kind of like your report card, right? Getting that, that unmodified opinion. So, everybody ought to be pleased with that. So, having talked about that, let me talk a little bit about the county's financial condition at June 30th, 2020. And, and if, if anybody from the outside is wanting to know how the county is doing, the one thing they're going to look at is your general fund, fund balance, especially your unassigned fund balance, because that's really what's available for general operations as you go forward. And so, we've got a few highlights here. What I want to do is take you to that unassigned fund balance. So, the county's unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2020 is about 1.9 million. That represents about 8% of what your expenditures were for that 2020 year, and about 10% of what you have budgeted for 2021. And from our perspective, we like to look at it on a percentage, because the dollars aren't as important as what that percentage is of your annual expenditures. And from our perspective, that, that percentage is pretty low. You can see, we've, that second bullet there, GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. That's a national organization, makes a lot of recommendations and works with local governments. They update their recommendation about what they consider to be a good minimum fund balance. And right now, that sits at 16.7%, or about two months. And I think that would be a great goal for us to work toward, to try to get to that point. And obviously, we've talked about that at some of the other meetings as well. And I want to highlight, there's all kinds of good reasons about why that healthy fund balance is so important, but the, the main thing that I want to remind you of is that when we measure that fund balance at June 30th, you as a county are going to be going about five to six months before you're going to be receiving any more significant property tax revenue, which obviously is, is a major revenue source. And so, that fund balance, part of the reason it's so important to have that healthy fund balance is because that's what's going to help carry us through until we get to the December-January timeframe and we start to see the property taxes coming back in on a more regular basis. As far as the year was concerned, I, I, on that first fund balance slide, you noticed that fund balance decreased for general fund overall, about half a million dollars for the year. Your general fund revenues were about 21.2 million, very similar to where you were in the prior year, but about 1.1 million better than what you had budgeted. And that's primarily related to your intergovernmental revenues that you received. On the expenditure side, you can see you were about $917,000 over where we were in the prior year, primarily related to salaries and benefits. And we were about $750,000 more than what we had budgeted, and, and a good bit of that was because of the pandemic and the additional costs that you had. The other fund that, one of your other major funds is your water and sewer fund. You can see that the net position, when we talk about net position in the water and sewer fund, that is the equivalent of fund balance in the general fund. And so, that net position, the water and sewer fund, actually decreased about a million dollars this last year. Your revenues were pretty similar, your operating expenses increased, but the grant revenues were down significantly, which is why you saw that change from an increase in your net position to a decrease. And I just, I know there's a lot of words on this slide, but it's really just to highlight for you, you've got two pretty significant liabilities that are out there. One's related to the retirement system, and the other one is related to your retiree health insurance. Both of those liabilities, let's talk about the retirement system, because that's really the big one. You can see, it's about almost $25 million. What that represents is your share of the unfunded liability that exists at the state retirement system overall. That's, that's your piece of it. So, that's obviously a big number, but I want to remind you that when you look at that, it's not like we suddenly have to come up with $25 million and pay that liability. What that actually, what you need to keep in mind, as a county, we're, we're doing what we should be doing, as long as we're making our regular payments to the retirement system every month, like you have for a long time and like you continue to. But, what I do like to point out to you is that, know that one of the most significant ways that the state is going to try to continue to close that gap with that unfunded liability is to continue to increase the rates. So that impacts your budget directly as you see the rates continue to increase with the retirement system. So know that that's just going to continue to, to be something we need to watch. Just to highlight on your capital assets, kind of a summary of, of the activity for the year. That last bullet, do note that the one fund that has a deficit fund balance right now is, is that, that one capital projects fund. It's got a deficit of about $430,000. And I know, we, the county's got plans with some future revenues to, to hopefully take care of that. And then, just kind of the highlights as well on your debt, really all your long-term obligations, your debt, your compensated absences, which is your vacation that people have earned but haven't taken or been paid for yet, as well as your landfill closure and post-closure costs. And you can see, this, this year we're in now, we were looking at about 6.3 million that we were going to need to be paying on that. This is just so you, make you aware of the fact that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is the oversight body that your finance staff and Robin and I as a team have to make sure that we're staying in compliance with, there's one new standard that's applicable for the year we're in now. We'll help make sure that the county's in compliance with that. And then, there's another one that, that we'll be, we'll be looking at next year. And then, the other thing that, that Robin is asked to spend some time on when she does the audit of the county, is because the county receives a significant amount of federal funds and also has some, some related debt, she's asked to look at the compliance on, with the federal expenditures that the county has. And, and you can see what was looked at this year. And, and I will say that you may or may not remember, but when Robin was here last year, she had quite a few findings that were included in the back of the financial statements. You will not see those, she's updated them, she has to address them again this year for the findings last year, but those findings are not there again this year. And that's a, that's a good time to again say thank you to Liz and Brendan and Dr. Wright and everybody for their hard work as we continue to, to address those and just continue to make the county get better and better at, at what we're doing. So that's kind of the highlights. Again, you got that unmodified opinion, everybody ought to be pleased with that, that's the goal. The one thing that I, I want to continue to really encourage you on, and I know we've talked about this at other, at other council meetings, is that general fund, fund balance, we really need to work hard at, at, at increase, some combination of increasing our revenues, decreasing our expenditures, so we can get that fund balance heading in the right direction. So that's a, that's kind of the summary of the 2020 year and, and the audit results. Robin, I don't know, do you have anything else you want to add?
First, well, first of all, I'm delighted to be here, and just to ask if any of you have any questions for me related to the audit report. Basically, I did basically the same procedures I do every year, except I didn't compile your financial statements. Larry Swerma and, and these two compiled your financial statements. So that allowed me to eliminate the, the reportable condition I've always had in your report. It was a pleasure to work with everyone on the team, and I think it worked very well for all of us. As always, I enjoy coming to Williamsburg County and working on this engagement, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good afternoon, y'all. And thank you for coming, and thank you for all the work you do with us and for us. Robin, just one question. As Larry said, I always look in at the back of that report for the deficiencies and the recommendations of what we can do better, even though there were no notice, noted deficiencies, or I think the way you, I think you said, no significant deficiencies. But, what are, I know it's a good report, like what I see, but things are not perfect here, but we, we are striving for perfection. What are some recommendations that we could do, that even though our audit report is good, that we perhaps could be better?
In the management letter, I have several comments. One of those comments is, one of the, one of the, in the management letter, I have several comments. One of them addresses a continuing situation with the number of bank accounts and, and reviewing each bank account and determining, is it absolutely necessary that we have that bank account? And that's an ongoing process. The, and I think at year-end, there were 73. The other thing is, as you go toward this new financial accounting software that you're implementing currently, or in the next few weeks you're going to implement, be very, be very conscious of maintaining the data for 2021's audit report, because we can't, we won't be able, if we can't access that data, it'll be very difficult to audit the financial statements of 2021, to make sure that, that, that data is still accessible and to maintain the integrity of that data and to be able to use that software or either transfer it over so that it can be used in the auditing process. Also, I can't remember the other one I said. Hold on.
Mr. Woods, while she's looking at that, the other thing I would mention is, we're really hoping to get more and more timely with getting this audit done and getting you, you know, more timely financial information that's, that's been audited. We had a goal to get it done a little earlier than we did. It's better than last year, but still not where we want to be.
Okay. The other item is, if the departments, and they, they do a great job in providing the information to the financial staff, as soon as they get that information in, if each department would be, include in their reports, information such as what is owed to them, like if the court system would tell us what is owed to, from the state or DSS at June 30th, if they will provide that additional data to, to the finance department and what they possibly owe for any accounts payable that might need to be recorded, if we add that from the departments to the financial staff, that will help expedite the process of the audit as well. But those are the three things that I, I wanted to bring to your attention. As always, internal controls only work if you work it. So, just because you have a clean opinion this year, you made vast improvements. You went from, I couldn't find the documentation for numerous invoices to, you know, you corrected that problem, you corrected several problems, but that, patting yourself on the back is a great thing, but it has to continue. Be very diligent in efforts to keep those, those financial gains that you've made, because everybody can, everybody can pat themselves on the back and then slip back into the same old patterns. That's what we don't want to happen. And if everybody stays, stays determined to meet those goals, then I think that we can move, all move forward and have a better, have better internal controls and more timely financial reporting.
Thank you all for the hard work that you have done. I want to say to our finance team, thank you for what you do, and Dr. Wright and her team. My question is, I'm, I'm looking at this slide here that says landfill closure and post-closure cost, 7 million.
Part of Governmental Accounting Standards requires that we record at June 30th, what you anticipate to have to pay to close that landfill, the total cost, based on the percentage of fill. So if it's 45% full, then we have to book 45% of that, of that total expected closure cost that you probably won't have to pay for over, you'll have to pay it over a period of, say possibly 20 years. So you won't owe it today. It's a lot like the, the net pension liability. As long as you're paying what you have to do this year, you're, they're not going to ask for that upfront, but it is a liability that we are required to record. You will note that those items are recorded in the, in the, in the financial statements, not of the individual funds, but of the statement of net position, which is the rolled-up, full accrual financial statements. And so, that, and that, in those two financial statements, in the statement of net assets and the statement of, the statement of net position and the statement of activity, they're full accrual. So they say, okay, if, if the world stopped today, this is what we're going to owe. But it's not going to stop, it's continuing, continuing to move forward, and so it's going to be paid over a period of possibly 20, 20 years.
Yeah. And I think the thing that caught my eye is that it says it's outstanding, and, and so, you know, that, that, that's the thing that caught my eye.
It's not a bill somebody sent us, no.
Okay.
Okay?
That's the major thing. And the last thing is, I, I do understand that, you know, we got more debt, because we got more loans for water, and, and so I do understand that part. And so, just to, just to the question or, or to the comment that, that you were making in the beginning, you know, of increasing revenue while at the same time decreasing expenditures. And so, I feel pretty good about where we are, but we do know that we still have some work that we need to do.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, and as far as the water and sewer net decrease, you have to understand, when you have grants, a lot of times the grant money is given first and then the loans, and the grant, when you have a grant, you get this revenue, but you're booking construction in progress. So you kind of, you inflated your financial statements, well, you did it correctly, but your, your financial statements for the prior year had the grant income and an asset, so there was no, there was no matching of that expense on the, on the income statement. So that's, that is why the, the water and sewer fund had a decrease this year, because it didn't have grant funds, it basically expended loan funds. So the asset and the liability were on the financial statements, and nothing hit the income statement.
Well, I, I mean, you, you noted that here, but is there any way that, you know, we could have that so that it doesn't look like it's making a negative impact?
No, that's just tough, because you've got to recognize the grant revenue the year you receive it, but the expenses are going to hit later, so it's really just a timing issue, but it's the way you've got to record it. So, once you get to the end of it all, it all evens out, it's just the way you have to record it year by year.
I would like for you all to share what has happened, as, me being a department head, as well as now being the county supervisor, as one of the citizens here, that you all have 74 bank accounts. I think that it is important that we kind of explain how that actually works in reference to, there are grants out there that you have to have accounts for, there are loans that we take out that we have to have a separate account for. So I think that some of that needs to be talked about so that people aren't walking away saying, oh my God, they got 74 accounts, they, they must got money.
I'll address that.
Thank you.
Basically, you know, I wouldn't suggest you change those accounts until you get to the point of being able to manage a, a bank account that is commingled. At this point, your commingling funds from various departments would be very difficult with the, with your current system to manage. So, I, although I don't think all of them are required, a large number of them are. Therefore, you know, until you get a handle on being able to record everything and record everything timely and not having a, a real good due-to-do-from accounting system set up that automatically sets up what is due from each fund, until you get to that point, keep the bank accounts, that in itself is not the worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is having one bank account and not having a clue which fund it belongs to. That would be worse. So, I don't have a problem with the number of bank accounts, as long as they're necessary.
Robin, isn't that, isn't that significantly less? I remember one time we were up around over 90, if I remember correctly.
Many is 110, I believe.
Okay. I remember at one time it was 90-something, and, and that was one recommendation, you were pretty adamant about a few years back, and so, that's significantly less.
Right. Because we had department, department heads managing money, where as they could sit, they could easily at the end of the day, walk over to the treasurer's office and here, this is our, this is our receipts for the day, and walk off. And then they don't have to worry about it. Someone else has to account for it. You have, you have a treasurer's office for that purpose. Their, their whole purpose is to account for the funds of the county.
Yes, yes, excuse me, Ms. Sullivan. Robin, we have been hearing about these bank accounts for years and years, and 20, 25 years or more. Now, you've gone through this process for a long time, and you know, we say we've decreased those accounts significantly. Through your going through this audit process, would you say, basically, the ones that can be consolidated have been that way? Are there, in your opinion, still lots of them, of that 74, there are many of those 74s that can be consolidated as well without causing any negative impact to the county?
I would have to review that question to answer it correctly, because after a while, you, you're used to having all the accounts, so I don't think about it in those terms. But I could, I could review that and get back with you on it, but I hesitate to answer it and make a rash answer, sometimes a quick answer is not always the best answer. So I, I think that there could be some, some savings in, in combining some of them, but until you get a handle on the new, you've got enough, sometimes you have enough going on. With implementing a new software system and all that goes, that has to be involved with that, I wouldn't, I would hesitate to address that concern on top of everything else that you've got to address as a county. So that's kind of why I backed off that a little bit, but I do think it's something to consider. And maybe some of the departments themselves can say, can provide their answer as to why they specifically need an account. Normally, the ones who need, need an account are Normally, the ones who need, need an account are, for instance, delinquent tax collector. They collect money that is owed to the homeowner or the taxpayers for the, for, basically is held in trust. And so they, we have to have that account. Clerk of court, there are certain accounts that they have to have. And you certainly don't want the child support checks mixed in with the county funds. You, you all, there's cer, and, and we have no problem with those accounts. But if, for instance, and I think, I think the Recreation Department, it may not need a bank account. Let's combine that with, just put that money in the general fund. It goes in the general fund anyway, but it, you know. Recreation Department, it may not need a bank account. You know, and, and, and I, I think they may have even eliminated that this year. But there are definitely some that you can actually, you can go through and make an assessment on.
Dr. Wright, with the new software that we're using, will that allow us to continue to get better with what we're doing?
Absolutely. The new software will definitely allow us the ability to communicate with one another. We've had some issues in the past to where it takes them so much time to get the information. And it's not anyone's fault, but to process the information from the treasurer's office and then putting it to, poor woman here has to do probably hundreds of due-to, to-froms and all this stuff. So, these ladies are working over, overtime to process information that's coming in. So now we should be able to see each other's information while running a separate general ledger, because the treasurer has hers and now we have ours. We will be able to see each other's information versus waiting for things to be downloaded and then she's to go through a sorting process. And it makes us paperless, a lot more paperless. So, any other questions? I'd like to take this opportunity, if you all would stand here as well, to say to my chief of finance, Ms. Elizabeth Nelson, this is her final audit and her final budget period with us this year. So, you know, we thank you for everything that you've done, obviously formally. We will, we will have something a little bit later on down the line. But this is her final. So she has done the county, she has served the county well in what we've had to deal with. So, I just want to say thank you to her and also thank you to Ms. Brenda and all the other departments and offices that have assisted us in this audit process. Any other questions? None? All right, very good. Thank you all so much. Our next order of business is our third reading. You know what, you ended up having to hand it over to me anyway. Third reading for ordinance number 2021-12. It's an ordinance of the Williamsburg County, South Carolina, approving an agreement for the enlargement of the joint county industrial park by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and other matters related to the foregoing. So we need a motion for final approval and third reading of this ordinance.
Motion for third reading?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of third reading and approval of ordinance number 2021-12, please signify by raising your hand. All right. Opposer's the same? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Our next order of business is the committee report. And, committee report. Prior to us talking about the committee report, and it's in reference to the bid committee report for Williamsburg County and the Chavis Wellness Center for the Hemingway Project, all members of council received an updated, updated copy of the options, as well as, as well as a breakdown of everything that's supposed to be covered for this project. I just want council to take note, and again, as, I want council to make sure that before the final decision has been made, that they are making an informed decision. So as I just brief you on this information, prior to us asking any questions or, and/or moving into a vote, is a couple of things. Our total available funding for this is $1,057,130. That's our total funding. That includes a makeup of our loans that were taken out back in 2016 and in 2018, as well as some of the grant funding that was received, which was in the amount of $248,700. Base bid for this particular project, and that's the base, the base includes the multipurpose field construction, restroom construction, concession stand construction, playground construction, and other allowances. Those other allowances include equipment, door hardware allowances, and contingency allowances. So the base construction price for this project at the Chavis Wellness Center is $594,058. They, the bidders introduced some alternates. Those alternates include, just to name, just to name the three that were considered an alternate, was in addition to this $595, the county has the luxury of adding in a splash pad, which is $132,153. Also, another option would be the field lighting for the, for the multipurpose field. And then another alternative would be to add in a running track and a concrete curb. Now, altogether, those items, if the county were decided to do this, all those together, just the alternative projects, ranges $420,388. Now, we also had to take into consideration the land clearing and grading. The land clearing and grading was not included in the original price for the bid, largely because it was supposed to be handed off to another department for which we realize our, we don't have the equipment or the expertise to properly do this. So, we got a bid for $150,000 to do the land clearing and the grading. So amongst all of these things, I've included everything that this project has, is included in the project. I've also listed a number of bids or options that council can look at in order to make a decision as to what they want to do. Obviously, option one would be our everything. You know, that would be the great thing that we could do. But unfortunately, that's going to over-budget us by $107,316. Options two, three, and four are, are much better. And those include adding in, option one would be adding in on top of the base bid and the land clearing, is to add in a splash pad and the field lighting. That's going to put us at about a negative $3,271, for which I am sure that the council members that are assigned to those areas can assist us with those funding. Option three would be, obviously, the base bid, land clearing, field lighting, and the running track. This would yield the counties, it would come under-budgeted by $24,837. Now, our fourth option, if council chooses to do so, would be obviously the base bid only. And it would bring us under-budget at about $463,072. So as you all begin to deliberate on exactly what you want to do, I just wanted to again ensure that you had all the information that you needed to make an intelligent decision about this incident. Any questions?
So you said, under, under option two, you have the splash pad as an alternate and, and the field lighting? Would those two things go together under that option, or they are separate?
So, you have three alternatives. You can flip them any way you choose to flip them, as long as you do not go over budget. And I've given a rendition of all three of them, basically. Again, like I said, two, three, and four. If you decided to do field lighting and a running track, well, I've accounted for that. And that would give you a $24,837,000 under budget. So it's kind of, you know, but no matter what, you're going to get your base items, which is the multipurpose field, restroom construction, concession stand construction, and your playground. So whatever alternative, if you do choose to do so, is listed as options. And option four is just the basics.
Okay, let, let me interject. I see it says, we have a list here, bid committee report. And I don't think really it's a report, because we have been through this before. And it was my contention, my understanding, that we had decided that if we were to do anything, we would do the bare basic, the minimum. And that would have been the construction of the concession stand and the field. I guess that's option four. And I guess it's just a matter now, because I've been hearing some members expressing a desire to let us abandon it. Some said they think it'll be a good idea. So I think what we need to do today is decide, are we going to do anything? And if so, which option are we going to use? Because I was under the understanding that we had already unofficially decided that we were going to go with the, with number, option four, which is the bare minimum. So I guess if we're going to still go with the bare minimum, if that's what we're going to do, we need to decide today if we are going to do anything down to the Chavis One Stop or not. Because this happened prior to this administration coming in. So I think it's pertinent that we decide, are we going to do this or not? Because I was, I was kind of sitting on the fence, because there were some intangibles in there that we didn't take into account before. And I think one of those is the land clearing, which was, was totaled about $150,000 that we didn't, didn't budget for. But I think, Dr. Wright, you say it's, it was accounted for now, right?
Now it is, sir, but it was not. I remember when you were all in a meeting and we realized that we were going to have to add this cost, which was a concern.
Right. And if we were to go ahead and do it, it would be no additional cost on the taxpayers?
No additional cost. The money is already accounted for, and it has been sitting in our bank. And we have been paying the finance and interest on it since 2016. So this is part of, just to be clear, it's part of old money. It's money that was used, leftover funding that was used when they did the first part of the Chavis One Stop building construction. This was when they put the roof on and they retrofitted the space for that. So this is not new money. We did not just apply for new money for this. So, this, this money was already out there.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think council members, we need to decide if we want to go forward with the Chavis project, or do we want, even though we have to spend some money already in this project, I don't know exactly how much, but I'm, I think it's kind of significant. But I think we need to decide if we're going to just throw that away, or whether we're going to go ahead, you know, throw it away and abandon the project, or we're going to go ahead and go along with the project. Because to be honest with you, I'm not too enthused about it. But I'm also not enthused at all about throwing away money. And we have the, the resources to do it now without any negative impact on the citizens of this county. But we still need to perhaps maybe discuss to see who, are we going to go forward with this project or not? So I guess that's my question to you today. Are we prepared to go forward with this project? And if so, which option are we going to go with?
Mr. Lee?
I, I wasn't, I wa, I wa, I was not here when y'all started this project in 2016. And I've heard a lot of people in my area talking about this project. And they, no question whether they want to go forward or not, they do. And they, and, and, and this, this, these different options that are listed by the supervisor.
Put your mic on, Mr. Lee. Turn your microphone on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now.
The, the different options that the supervisor listed, myself, I was, I was thinking option two. Now, if, if, if the county's got an extra, what, $3,271, that would be the one that I would be, that would be in favor of. But, but as far as doing the project, the money's there, isn't it, Madam Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
And, and that's, that's the one that, that's the one that I would, that's the one that I would recommend. Thank you.
Madam Supervisor, is this, this money is designated for this project, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we can't take this money and go spend it somewhere else? We either got to give it back or spend it on this project, is that correct?
You can re-obligate the money. But if you do, or the loan money, obviously, we just send it back and no harm, no foul. But the, some of the grant funding was written for specific parts of this. So you'd have to de-obligate it, or you could ask to see if we can.
Do you know the breakdown in the grant versus the loan money?
Grants is $248,700, and the rest is loan.
Does anyone else have any concerns?
How are you going to go about voting? Which option?
So.
I would just say, this is the first time I've seen these options. Now, I know that we have talked about, it's been in the talks about Chavis Project, but council members, I may have to disagree with these specific options, whether it's a track or what it's going to be. Now, this is the first time I've seen options presented in front to me, one, two, three, or four. Y'all may have had it on the bid committee.
Yeah.
But I'm not on the bid committee. So there are members here, myself included, who have not had the opportunity to entertain these options until now.
Okay.
So, council members.
There's no sense, we don't have to vote tonight. And we could vote in two weeks, and it would be just as simple as tonight, wouldn't it, Madam Supervisor? For those who are just seeing this for the first time?
This was all put together in a bid tabulation. I just pulled them out so that you all can see them. So they did receive these the day we were all here during the finance committee meeting. We discussed this in detail. If we continue on with this process, what's happening is every time we're holding this process up, it's more money. It's, am I correct, Mr. Jesse? Every time, every week we deal with this, every day we go by, this is increasing in cost. Because these folks that have already set the cost in place, and with the cost of everything going up, we're going to have to make a decision.
I agree.
Going to a lot of stuff too long, because we got to make a decision. If you all don't want to, that's on you, but just know.
It is for years and years, we've been dragging this on a long time.
It's been years.
I, I think, you know, we've been dragging this since 2016, as has been said. I, I find that, that's a wild moment for me, 2016, that we've been paying back money on a loan for a project that we haven't even done yet. And, and I think the citizens deserve to have this project done for them. Mr. Lee asked about the $3,000 that would be over-budgeted. And so I'll, I'll present that question again, and then I'm going to make a motion that we go with that option two, according to your answer. But would that, that over-budgeted portion of $3,271, how would we be able to take care of that?
Good question.
Excretionary funding?
Excretionary.
Excretionary funding? For those who, who are for the project, obviously.
Madam Supervisor, I'm part of that bid committee. And there was a little, there was some, a little difference within that committee than other bids coming before council. Normally, and we talk about this being from 18, I mean, we have been through three. This may be the third budget. And now that we are saying that this is coming up now, I just don't understand how this has lain it around so long. And, and to be quite honest, when it came up to this budget committee, this was the first time in about three years that we heard anything about that. So that, that's what got me a little confused. The whole procedure, how do we get from 2018 or 2016 to now without this really coming before council again?
So what has happened is, when you send in, initially, this project started off as a pool. And when you send in revisions, you have to wait for the architecture to change that. Because if USDA is not going to approve... that, because if USDA is not going to approve portions of a project, then you got to wait your time for them to determine what the outcome is gonna be. So they ended up telling them no to a pool, and killed the funding there. They said, all right, let's try something else. So mind you, an architecture has to design and develop whatever the new part of this is, and then submit it for approval. So that back and forth has cost us engineering funds, as well as time on this. So when you get to this point, and now you're like, okay, finally, all the funding is where it needs to be at, we have all of our requirements met, we are not including the splash pad on the grant portion, because I had to sign a statement stating that that would not be included there, it would be in the, in the grant portion of it. They wanted to make sure that everything was in, was an allowable expense. So that takes time, you know, we, it gets, it just gets overran sometimes with other projects that come up. So, you know, as far as what happened during 2019, that's pretty much what we ran ourselves into, from 2019 up until now.
Then, just one final question, is that if, for the last year, year and a half, we're talking, and we have said to the citizen that we don't have any funds, and we go through a process of revising our employees, we just have too much employees, and we got to lay some off and remove some, and we come up and we got to combine some departments in order to, for our operating expenses and our budget and stuff, how do we come up now and say, okay, we can go, we can invest this money now? What have happened in the last year that just put us now where we can go into this project, where we don't have, we're saying that we cannot afford the, 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 the businesses and, and the parks and stuff we had, and we talking about closing parks because we don't have the funds, or we don't have the people to work these parks? How do we get, how do we explain that now? How do we get there where we now have the access to help these people?
Well, this probably should have been thought about back in 2016, because that's when the money was originally borrowed for a project of this nature. The money that we're dealing with right now, and this is not coming out of the general operating budget, this is of loans and of grants. And unfortunately, a decision was made to get, to get all these things approved, because I'm sure that when we did these loans, those things were included in it. And you have to either do one or two things. You either are going to vote yay, or you gonna vote nay on whatever the option is. But this funding source was already put out there back in 2016. So as far as telling the citizens that, you know, I'm sorry, you can't have this done, we need to be consistent with that throughout every single thing we do in government. We need to be consistent in letting them know that unfortunately, we don't have the manpower, and we don't have the funding to do this, so there's certain things that we're not gonna do. But we need to be mindful of the projects that were already put out there, and the funding source was already approved for.
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with the project with option two, understanding that the over budget will have to come from these, from discretionary funds, and we would like to go, again, as I said, with option number two.
All right, I have a, I have a substitute motion. Um, oh, wait.
You made the motion, correct?
Yes.
And he, that he has the main motion that's on the floor right now?
And he's second.
And I'll, okay.
Second before he, you, did you hear that? He seconded before?
Uh-uh.
He seconded first, okay. That means we can't even accept your, your motion at this point. Any discussion at this point? We have a motion?
Yes, okay, I do have some, I have a discussion, Madam Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
The, the only thing, this is good, it's good that we want to go ahead and do this. But I'm, I'm more leaning toward option four, and let me say why. Even with options two, there's still a deficit. We, we have three hundred, three thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars we don't have. Now, with option four, we are under budgeted. So for that purpose, not only a loan, but for that purpose, I think that's would be a better option, and I just wanted to say that, that's why. I just cannot support, as you said earlier, I think, Mr. Miller, money that we don't have, if we have to, even if we pay for that out of discretionary, we still could take that discretionary money and do something to help the citizens, as opposed to putting it in that. When we could still do a facility there and have money left over, as opposed to doing the project and having to find money. So for that reason, basically, I can't support that option. I do think we need to do it, but I don't think that option is, is the most viable one for the, the county, and conducive for the citizens of this county.
Any other que, any other discussion?
Real quick, Supervisor, and I'm sorry if you, this seems like you're being redundant, but I just want to understand, if we were to go with option four, where we would have a surplus of four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, where would that surplus go?
Send it back, and then you would have to apply for another project to be able to utilize the funds, which is gonna take probably another six months or longer.
Okay.
Because you have to get approval. If you de-obligate it, or you try to change or alternate where this funding is going, other than what it was placed to do, then you're gonna have to go through this whole process again.
But just so for the citizens that are watching, if we were to go with option four, we would save almost a half a million dollars, and there still would be a, a park. It just wouldn't have all those options, just to simplify it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion for option two, please signify by raising your hand. Make sure you get a good count. Opposers, the same.
Oh, yeah.
The motion is dead. Moving on to the next order of business, um, let's see.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll make the motion to do option four.
We're not gonna decide.
Yeah, we need to decide. You know, such a?
I would suggest you all wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
We not gonna decide tonight?
The motion is dead.
Dead.
But I think Councilman Woods had an alternate motion he was attempting to, I thought I understood you say, we need to decide tonight.
Yes.
One of the options.
And are y'all sure y'all want to deal with that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going by what you told me. I didn't want to deal with any of them tonight, but you, you, you said we needed to do it tonight. I mean, we've been since.
Pushing died, I want to make sure that all the, you know, all the processes are done properly. So if you are all ready to go ahead with it, we can go ahead and try to make a motion. Go ahead, make your motion, Mr. Woods.
Okay, I like, I like the motion that we go ahead and construct this, agreed to construct this project in the Hemingway area, but we go with option four. And that's my motion, that we go with option four in the construction of the recreational facility project in Hemingway.
We need a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, and all those in favor of the motion for option four, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same.
Same.
Dead. That's why I said we better wait and discuss this a little different.
All right.
Moving on to the next order of business, moving on to the next order of business. Oh, that was interesting. Anybody have any alternatives? I guess we will discuss that later. So at this point, this project is dead.
So we gonna, we gonna, we gonna try to?
We gonna try to resurrect that, or is it just gone?
Dead, sir.
Good.
Once you killed it, it's dead.
Thank you.
It's dead.
The, so the project will not be?
Will not happen. We will de-obligate all funds and return the remainder of the funding. All right, our next order of business is under the Supervisor's report. Ms. Erin Pate is here, along with our Executive Director of the Parks and Recreation Facility. She'd like to discuss with us in reference to the, our new initiative for the park in Williamsburg County, as well as any other information she's willing to provide us. Ms. Pate, you may come on up.
Good evening. Good to see you all, and thank you, Council, for allowing me to come speak. Thank you, Supervisor Wright. My name's Erin Pate. I'm coming to you in a different role than I've been here before. I previously worked for the Coastal Conservation League and worked with Councilwoman Miller a lot on the Limestone Mine, but I've changed jobs now, and I, I work for the Black River Cypress Preserve. And I'm gonna tell them a little bit about Cypress Preserve, and then we'll talk about a special event that we've got coming up. So the Black River Cypress Preserve is about a thousand acres on, on the Black River, right at the county line between Warsaw and Andrews, and it's privately owned by a gentleman that I would call a philanthropist. He has his own foundation. He cares a lot about keeping rivers pristine, and he loves the Black River. He has spent, are you sitting down, eleven million dollars on this property already, and what has he done there for that amount of money? He's put some great trails, he's built some beautiful buildings, he's continuing to make that space beautiful, and he's gonna, is going to be a public asset to the citizens of Williamsburg County. It's going to be a place that your citizens, no matter where you are in, in Williamsburg County, you're gonna want to bring your family, you're gonna want to come spend the day, have family reunions, have picnics, go for a walk, that kind of thing. I know Councilwoman Hammond, you've been there for a movie night that we did last fall, and that was a lot, that was a lot of fun to do that. And so, Turquoise and I have been working together to plan a time for you all as council, and some staff in the county, to come to the Black River Cypress Preserve next week. On Tuesday, June twenty-second, we're going to give you a tour of the property. We're gonna take you out on a boat, if you'd like to go, for a very short ride on the Black River, and we're gonna provide you lunch. So we hope that you'll carve out some time on next Thursday. Is anything you want to say about that, Turquoise?
For those that haven't responded yet, if you all, you know, decided to still want to go, just let me know.
Ten.
Ten, we're gonna be there at ten. Yep. So if you all want to carpool, meaning we'll transport you all down there, just let us know, so we can make sure we got the right transportation, and/or some of you may want to drive. However, we do want you there.
Where is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twenty-second. And we really would love for you, I know, you know, it's hard to carve out time in the middle of the day, but if you can get there around ten, then we can take you on a tour, and we'll finish with lunch, and you'll be out of there, you know, roughly about, I'd say no later than one. So please do try to come. We'd love it, we really would love it. And it'll be a great day. I've talked to Dr. Wright a little bit about having a Williamsburg Citizen Family Day out at the Cypress Preserve later this summer, and I hope that's gonna happen. We'll certainly roll out the red carpet for, for citizens, and really make it a fun day for kids and, and that kind of thing.
Yes, we are still planning for that.
That's great. And just a couple of quick, quick things. I wanted to, as you all know, because you've been watching and reading about the Black River, the Black River's getting a lot of attention right now. Turquoise and I serve on a steering committee that's associated with the state park. We're all excited about the state park happening, and sort of this branding that's going on up and down the Black River. It's getting a lot of attention, not just locally, but across the state. You probably saw an article in the Post and Courier about two months ago, it was on the front page of the Post and Courier, it was about the Black River. It really got a lot of attention, and there's been subsequent articles in the Post and Courier about it. And as all that's happening, the state park is doing a community outreach and survey to get ideas about what people want in a state park. Do they want to fish? Do they want to picnic? Do they want to paddle in a boat? Whatever they want to do. And what do they want to see happen going forward? And I got some results from the survey so far, and there's been eight hundred and sixty-four people who have filled out that survey so far, and out of that, seven hundred and forty-seven people said, and it was the top result, we need to clean the litter from the river and the riverbanks. That was eighty-six percent of the people who filled out the survey said that was a, one of the top things they wanted to see happen. And when the owner of, of the Black River Cypress Preserve saw that, he said, I want to commit some resources to helping the county, you know, address that. And so I, Dr. Wright and I have spoken about that. We are excited about partnering with the county to address litter up and down the river, because in a way, you're, that's sort of your new public, I mean, you're gonna be getting people from all over the state and regionally, coming to King Street, coming up and down the Black River and the county. And we want to put our best foot forward, and so I think addressing some of the trash issues, and we just look forward to, to partnering with you all on that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Pate?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is underneath the Supervisor's report. Just wanted to report to you all that we are, we have started on the list of items. Last week, we included the premium pay, as well as we purchased two new recycling center houses for our recycling center attendance. We were approved, thanks, I know that's great. We were approved under a USDA grant for a little over twenty-eight K to help buy four of them, while the county used American Rescue Plan money to purchase the remaining sixteen of them. We will also be installing new platforms to those containers that are in the recycling center, that are the thirty-yard containers, the, the large ones, they hold our bulk waste and yard waste. What we've noticed and what we found out is our citizens are having a great deal of difficulty having to launch their items into a, a very tall bin. So we are going to be building a platform so that they'll be able to walk up and toss their trash down in it. Unfortunately, we couldn't do anything like Scranton has done, because of the size of our recycling centers. We are looking at trying to do something like that in one of our other locations, where you drive up and drop your trash in, but unfortunately, we're still working that out. But over the next week or two, you should see a, what we call a test of this piece of equipment being placed out there, allowing our citizens to be able to use the bulk waste containers or the thirty-yard containers more easily. We are gonna have our first two will be at the Public Works location, and the Hemingway location will be where we will be testing these out. And I'm looking for citizen input to tell, let us know if it's working out, or any improvements we need to make for that. I met with Senator Saab and Macy Onance with the Department of Carmel, Murris, along with other leadership in Williamsburg County, about some potential funding that they may be able to offer us, to help with some of the initiatives with economic development. Amongst those things, I did mention to them the housing plan that we are attempting to kick off over the next couple of weeks. They did let me know, or advised me, that they will check into it to see if the funding could be used, so we could actually get additional funding from them to assist us in our housing plan, as well as Waukamau, Waukamau Cog also have, or have the ability to get us some funding. So we're looking at a really good funding pot for us to go in and start building new homes for people. Let's Talk in a Park will begin July tenth. At first location will be the Muddy Creek Community Building at eleven, and St. Lawrence Community Building that same day at one, and the Neesmith Park at three PM. I am inviting members of council, if you would like to attend and join us when I come to your district, you are welcome to do so. Also, I want to announce the Job Fair, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, from nine AM to three PM, at the Williamsburg County Recovery Center, twenty eighty-six Thurgood Marshall Highway. Now, this Job Fair is being conducted for critical positions that we have, that we must. that we must fill within the county, not positions that we don't necessarily need to fill, that we can actually work those position ourselves, but these are critical positions essential to those particular job functions. So again, that's June 21, 2021. We are still extending help to those that qualify and are in need of rental assistance. You can call our office, and we will connect you with the right group that's assisting with that, which is our media marketing team and our emergency management division that are helping citizens get signed in and get rental assistance they need. Also, I didn't mention it last meeting, I think I did mention last meeting, but the county is doing, county is under the auspice of our sheriff's office, as well as our recreation department. They are kicking off this year's county music festival. So I am excited about this opportunity for them to do it this year. Obviously, COVID stopped a lot of things, but they are embarking on a mission to get this done this year for us. That event is gonna be held July 31, 2021. Obviously, it's gonna start off with a 5K run and a 1.5-mile walk, followed by a classic car show, a business expo, and of course, a lot of music and a potential dance-off, from what I'm hearing, and all other activities associated with that day. Please join us, members of council. Remember, council, we represent Williamsburg County, and we need you to do what you can, because to make this event for us a success. Now, each municipality, they have their own event every year. However, this is Williamsburg County. So I expect that all of members of council will show their face and do whatever they need to do to make this event a success. Any other announcements by members of council? I'm sorry, we're also looking for sponsors and vendors to jump in with me if you need to. Sponsors and vendors are needed. And you can reach out to the Williamsburg County Recreation Facility to get that information to them, or call the office, and we'll get you that information. Any other announcements by the body?
Supervisor, I know that last year, we recognized Gullah Geechee Day in Williamsburg County. Will we be doing that again this year?
Usually, they reach out to us, and they ask for the proclamation to be done. I had not seen any correspondence with them. I know that they're in the fight for their lives right now, so perhaps maybe I need to reach out to the queen.
Yes, because they reached out to me, and so I said that I would relay it.
All right, if they would give us, have them call Tammy.
Sure will.
And we'll go ahead and get it on the next agenda. Any other announcements? Make sure you make note of that. All right. I need a second? Oh, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, before y'all do that. Forgot about our price chart. That's 'cause I don't have my agenda in front of me. Okay, so old business, I'm sorry, the price chart. Williamsburg County Propose Rental Application Price Chart. And disclaimer, last meeting, I talked to you all about giving you an opportunity to look the list over, because this is the last piece that will be holding us up from opening our facilities for our citizens to enjoy. So if you all had an opportunity to look them over, look at the application, look at the pricing list, any questions regarding it, because I am gonna ask for us to take a vote on it tonight. No problems, no questions. We need a motion to approve the current, or the proposed chart for rentals.
So move, ma'am chair.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please. All those in favor of the proposed price list going forward with the Williamsburg County Community Facilities, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. Thank you all. We have a motion for adjournment on the table already. Second and a second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same, we are adjourned. Thank you, Williamsburg County citizens, Williamsburg County council.